... November 29 to order, please rise for mono silence follow by the pledge.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Okay, we are going to start with public input this morning. We have two public input cards. So first we'll hear from Mrs. Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Good morning. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the ESER funds, money that we're going to be getting. And along with safety protocols for COVID, I think this is a perfect opportunity to do a lot of things that are good for students and for employees. This is an opportunity of money that you don't normally see. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention and thank you for the survey and the committee meetings that we had. Also, on another note, I just wanted to, there's been a lot of stuff going on about the new Aurelia Cole Academy with the principals' ideas. And I just, you know, I don't know if anybody's called you, but I've heard from a lot of parents, a lot of teachers, workers, and they're really not happy. They've been waiting for a new school and only partial, partial students would be going to that new school. So I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention. I told them I thought it would have to come to the board meeting for final. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tibbetts?
Good morning, Adam Chairman, Superintendent Corningay, Board members. I also too want to speak to you this morning about the ESER funds. And I'm sure a great deal of time has been spent, as I read in the paper, about money being allocated for this, that, and the other thing. Understand one thing, you have a $73 million windfall sitting in your hands that somehow has to be related to the pandemic. And there's all sorts of things listed, including things like replacing carpet, which monies can come from other sources. But one thing where money can't come from most your sources is more money for teachers. Weeks ago, you had a number of teachers stand here, veteran teachers, telling you about the absurdity of their living existence and working existence and the salaries they make. I would propose the following. The week before we break for winter break, the principal in every school walks around to every teacher that's been there five years or more and hands them a check for $1,000 and says, "Thank you." And we'll do this again next year, and the year after, and the year after. One of the concerns is retention. It's in your list of things. Wow. What do you think that would say in terms of, all of you sat here two weeks goes, "Oh, it's awful. We wish we could do something for our teachers." You got $73 million in your hands now. What are you going to do for your teachers? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts. All right, we are going to go right into 3.01, which is our ESER funds.
Oh, good morning, everyone. And Mr. Ward's prepared to provide the, an overview of the documents that you received. They were placed on board docs. So you should have had an opportunity. I hope, if not, you have a copy in front of you of the proposed spending plan and that was developed by the committee as required by statute, and as well as the survey results. And he'll give you the highlights of that as well. And staff's here to answer questions as we, as he goes through this. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you very much. Is this? Yep, there we go. Thank you. First slide, please. So just kind of give an overview of the process that we took. There was a requirement that we involve stakeholders in public input for ESER III funds. That was a requirement that was different. ESER I and ESER II did not require that, but ESER III did. So we put together a stakeholder committee meeting. We, we'd had some employees, we, obviously our staff. We had some teachers represented. Our both, both of our unions were represented, parents, students. So we had a good representation of, of people who brought a lot of good ideas, a lot of great ideas to the table. We took those ideas and, next slide, we took those ideas and we, we put them all out. Whether we knew that they would result from ESER funds or not, we put them all out in surveys and let the community chime in for public input, give an opportunity for them to rank what they felt like was most important. And you have a copy of that ranking in the documents today. And then, the next slide. We, staff put together some budgets, some estimates on some of the costs and how far we wanted to go, what we wanted to include, what we didn't want to include. And, and let me just say that we felt like that everything that was brought up was a really good idea. Some of the ideas did not specifically fit ESER. And we want to propose spending to cover those ideas also because we felt like that they were important. But if it wasn't on the list, it just means it wasn't part of the ESER plan. And we're looking at other ways to fund those other ideas that, that we felt like were important and that are, that our stakeholders felt like were important too. Next slide. And then we took that and we developed the ESER III plan, which you all have a copy of in front of you. I believe Ms. Owens sent out a copy a couple days before the break and should have had time to look through that and see what it was. It's a very large plan. There's a lot of information in there. We felt like that it would be more efficient of our time to not actually go through every item, item by item, and discuss it. We felt like that it would be better just to give an opportunity for you guys to have some input into it, what you like, what you don't like. If you have changes, if you have other recommendations, we will definitely take that into consideration. And then the other document that you have in front of you is just a summary document. It has a list of all of the items in two pages and with cost. We also noted in that list whether it was funded with ESER II funding. So some items that were funded in ESER II, we would continue into ESER III, part of the proposal. But the big thing that, if you'll look at the second page down at the bottom, this plan does spend every available dollar. So it's, it's fully funded. If you want to add or change something, then you have to find something that you want to subtract from. So just wanted y'all to know that.
So we'll just open it up for discussion at this point?
I think so.
Yeah, specifically, I know that in the email that Ms. Owens sent, there was a couple of items that are not on this plan that we know were important to the board. One of them was the science equipment and making sure that all of our labs, middle and high school labs, were well-equipped and kind of establishing a standard for what those labs need to have. We need to engage some teacher groups to talk about what those standards need to look like in terms of equipment and supplies. But we are looking to fund that out of another source. That was one of the key items that's not in here that we need to spend some time on, that we are looking to fund. And also, one of the other things that came up from the stakeholder group is the funding for performing arts, similar to what we did with the athletics. And so we do have another funding source for those two items in particular that we are going to make sure are covered. And we're working on what that formula is going to look like and, but we do have a source for that as well. So that's why they're not in the plan, but please know that those are two items in particular that we thought were critical, that we want to make sure are funded through another funding source.
And Madam Chair, I apologize, I forgot to read my notes. Superintendent did a good job on that. One other point of clarification, the way that the language is written as far as the AC and IB program, it looks as if we're trying to put that in every elementary school, and that's not true. We're only planning on putting that in a few schools. So the, that, we just wanted to clarify that so that the understanding was clear. And also, one of the things that was the, that was ranked fairly high was the interventionalist, basically just adding additional teacher at each school to, to provide intervention to our classrooms. And that's not in our plan. And I felt like it was worth having a conversation about that. We felt like that's a good idea, but at the same time, if you add another position, that, that's not a regular classroom instructional position. You run the risk of having teachers leave the classroom and go into that position. And we already have an issue with vacancies and absenteeism. So we felt like that it was more important to address vacancies and absenteeism because if we have fully staffed schools with all of our teachers, we feel like that it would address the, the learning loss issue that we have. So that was one of the reasons why. The other thing is, is if we added all of those positions, we would have to find an alternative funding source in the future to pay for them. And that would be difficult in these times, so.
Can we, can we get back on that? What other, like, extra, VPK classrooms will be extra? What other items here leads to salaries or leads to new hires? Because that's my, that's my exact concern, is that, should we put these people on a one-year hard contract, a two-year hard contract? Because it doesn't seem right to create these positions that we have no way of sustaining in the future.
Right. So one of the things that we did, staff did, is when we looked at these positions, we looked at, what are some of the things that we do need to address, whether we had ESER funding or not? And one of the, one of the things that we were trying to do is we were trying to find programs that were basically were started with ESER funds, but then they would have that alternative funding source in the future, like VPK. So the more VPK classes you have, the more VPK revenue you have. And so the, the idea is to get them started with ESER dollars, but then they would be sustained down the road by their own funding. The only source, or the only group of individuals who that would not cover would be the, there, if you look at item 36, there are four HVAC maintenance people and then one environmental person that would work in the district with a lot of our environmental concerns that we have throughout our district. That would be reoccurring. But those are, again, again, those are things that we know that we need anyway.
Did you include the HR one in there as I was reading?
Yes, there is, there is an HR one in there also, and of course, that's recruitment.
Right. There's an HR person?
Yeah, and that's to supplement, right now, isn't Kiana Peterson doing all the recruitment for non-instructional and instructional? And so I think that's to focus on the non-instructional. But that would be something we would, I mean, most likely would, would like to continue, I would imagine.
Yes. As, if, if we still have the recruitment need two or three years down the road, which I think we will, then absolutely. The other one is the additional support person for the federal grants. Basically, our federal grant reporting is almost tripled since ESER kicked in. So we'll probably keep that individual on, but we'll reassess that, you know, as, if we're still having a lot of new federal programs, we'll keep that person on. If not, if it gets to where we don't need that person, then I'll absorb that, that position back in.
I know. That's the problem, is you absorb the position back in, right? Like?
Well, what I say, absorb that.
Do you mean the position goes away, or that person gets stuck in some other district spot?
That position goes away.
But does the person and the, and does the, do you know what I'm saying?
Through attrition, yeah. I would keep the person, but, but I would have enough.
Through attrition?
Yeah, I would have enough through attrition to move that person in another department if I need to, in my department if I need to.
Is there any question? Is there a time when you're going to give us a little bit more information about the criteria being used for the elementary schools that will be a part of the Cambridge program? Or is someone going to do that?
Elementary schools?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I need one from now then.
So I think the original plan that they submitted to us only included the Aurelia Cole K8. And then I think they're going to talk about that in the future. So I'm not sure.
Okay, so at some point, they're going to tell us about that.
Ms. Ellis was supposed to be here this morning, but she had a family emergency.
Okay.
Wait, who's that?
Well, that department.
Which department?
College and Career Readiness. Right, right now, they're looking at the feeder patterns. And so if you look at-
Why would you put Cambridge ACE in an elementary school?
It's pre, pre-Cambridge.
Yeah, it's a pre-Cambridge program. It's accelerated opportunity for elementary students. It starts as early as kindergarten that they have, similar to ACE, a lot of your, you know, think about the college readiness skills as, as early as kindergarten, where you're doing critical thinking and problem-solving activities and whatnot are built into the curriculum.
I guess I, that's what school's for. I mean, I just, that's, that seems absurd to me, like, to start kids in kindergarten on some, that, that just doesn't, that doesn't, I don't know. I need to learn more about that program.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we can certainly bring to you a presentation about what the elementary program would look like and what the plan would be as we, before we would implement.
Well, my concern is not the quality of the program. I just am concerned about how many kids will have the opportunity to be exposed to it. I think it has good value. I just want to make sure as many children as we can possibly allow will have access to it.
When we're talking about secondary, how are we defining secondary? Are we using the, the middle and high school definition? Or are we using the high school definition?
Middle high school.
So all middle schools would receive this program in all high schools?
So give me just a second because I actually have their plan in a little bit more detail. And I can speak from it. So they're looking at Cambridge ACE, Leesburg High School, Uptown High School, South Lake High School, East Ridge High School, Claremont Middle School, no, that's a K B R, CMS.
Carver? Carver.
Carver, thank you. Now, I'm completely lost.
Oak Park.
Oak Park, Uptown Middle School, Groveland Middle School, Groveland? Great, thank you. And ACA, which is?
Aureale Cole.
Aureale Cole, sorry.
Wendy Hill?
My acronym.
Is that on your list?
I'm looking for Wendy Hill.
Eventually, the plan is for it to be in all middle schools.
Yes.
Is it also all high schools then?
I don't know the answer to that. All but Mount Dora High School.
Because the AP?
Yeah, because they, we are working on a collegiate high school program in collaboration with Lake Center on that one, so.
So maybe if sometime in the future, we could have a presentation on what's planned and who it includes.
Sure.
I think it would be beneficial. I think it was the young man who serves as your liaison at, from Leesburg High School.
Mm-hmm.
Who, yes, Stinko, thank you. I couldn't, 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 he, he mentioned in the planning meetings, the, maybe just the concern for the AP programs, if we're going to bring ACE and Cambridge, and I, Cambridge ACE and IB to every single high school, will that, are we going to replace AP programs? Or will have AP programs for students that won't be involved in IB or the ACE Cambridge program? Like, are we going to see our enrollment decline? Is that going to be unintended consequences, cost, not cost-effective with our AP courses? I know he mentioned that. So it would be nice to see a comprehensive plan if we're going to spend this amount of money on those programs.
Sure.
I don't think anybody, we all are encouraged, I think. I know that we started this conversation almost eight years ago about an IB program being available here, but I, I'm sure we need to maybe think through the whole programmatic impact.
Yeah, I feel like, especially if we're looking all the way down to elementary, like, we need to actually look at the curriculum of the program, understand like what, like, something about it. I mean, I've never heard of Cambridge ACE all the way down to elementary, and there's no way to know if it's good without a discussion.
We have our next workshop talk.
Go ahead. I, I want it to be open. I don't, we could probably all talk for a while.
Well, I got, I got a question, number one, about the instructional materials. I know it's a significant portion of money there, and I'm not quite sure if this is, is this primarily to fund the next adoption of textbooks? Or is this primarily to supplement what we've got now of existing?
Just to replace it.
So this, this is to supplement the new adoption that's coming out.
So, so?
The math adoption.
Yes.
The math adoption. So basically, this is the math adoption. Are there any other materials included in that? Or really, we're just looking at the math adoption?
There, when we rolled together some of the softwares that we're already purchasing and added to that also, so there are some other materials in there, but the majority of that is definitely the, the additional math adoption.
I'm just wondering if we're thinking about addressing the learning loss, is buying the new adoption that we would be buying anyway necessarily addressing the learning loss?
Well, so this is just supplementing on top of the cost of the materials that are not provided by the instructional material allocation. So if we were going to buy this level without the ESER dollars, we would have to come up with an additional $5 million.
Wow.
Is, I mean, is that because of the program we chose? Is that all math program?
We haven't, we haven't chose a program yet.
Like, how do we know that it's going to be 10 million? Because we have, how much do we have in allocations?
For textbooks?
Two or three for textbooks? Two or three?
Yeah, it's not, it's not substantial. It's between $2 and $3 million.
Okay.
But it's, it's, what typically happens when you have large adoptions is you spend all your money that you can the first year of the adoption, and then hopefully there's a year that you don't have a heavy adoption, and you have to wait until that period of time. So the idea of the learning loss is we get them all at the same time, and that way they have all the materials and they don't have to wait two years to get the remaining portion of it.
Well, that makes sense. Okay.
It's certainly nice to see the option of having a complete adoption.
I know, right?
But I think to Mr. Dodd's point, where there are reading resources, now that we've been in that for a year, that we weren't able to adopt last year, or science resources the year before, is there anything that we've, we've brought forward in that $5.5 million? Is that solely for this mathematics? And if it's just solely for mathematics, is there, should we be considering the missing reading or the missing science elements?
We definitely could discuss. Well, I, I mean, I can get back to staff and ask. I can get back to Mr. Compton.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
I think my other, my other big question is, I know that there are a number of items in here that are would naturally be subject to collective bargaining. I guess just taking a quick look, items like 40 through 49, they're all TBD. And on the summary of all the dollar amounts, those are not included. Now, you've said that this budget is, is fully, fully, fully packed out, right? So if, so if we want to fund any of those items in 40 through 49, does something else have to give?
No. If you, if you'll go to 39, that's $6.5 million is for all of those items below. It's just not specifically lined because obviously we have to get to the process.
Where's 40 through 49? It's in the packet.
They're not on that chart, but they're in the packet.
So that, my question leading into that is that $13 million for maintaining instructional positions, is our enrollment that much lower? I know, and maybe I'm completely off base with this, but I know last year, even with school opening virtually and face-to-face, that we had less students and we chose to maintain our teacher numbers. Is that to the tune of $13 million this year? Are we that over allocated?
So for the, for the beginning of this year, we were $10 million different. With, with our early numbers on FTE, we're, we're probably at about six and a half now. So we're, we're improving. And so I just took that six and a half and doubled it for the next two years. So as, as our kids come back and that gap closes, then we'll have additional funding for other purposes.
So in three years, because I know what we have, like a September 24 deadline, I don't think it's up till yet, but for the dollars to be spent, would we potentially be looking at making staff reductions to the tune of $5 million?
We're hoping that the students continue to come back. So, well, and, you know, it's a class size issue. Right now, our class sizes are small, but right now it's really hard to understand because we have so many vacancies and so many absences. So our, our classes are actually chaotically large.
So we've cut it in half. You said six and a half is where we're sitting now, and it's 13 allocated. So we've cut that number in half that we've over allocated, but we still have classrooms that are?
Yes.
So we're over allocated, but our teachers are telling us we have, they have too many kids in the class? How does, how is, it's just pockets?
Because of the vacancies and because of the, the absenteeism. So we, we've got the allocations there, but we don't have the people in.
So if we don't have the people, though, we're not paying the people.
But we're not paying for them. Yeah, that's my problem. So that's where I'm confused.
Right.
So you have to budget for it, but?
We're, we're budgeting for it. That is correct.
But we're not collecting, how?
But this, this is salary lapse, though. Then at some point, though, if we go half the year, which basically we've gone now and not filled a position, then those dollars, we didn't actually spend.
And our salary lapse for the current budget was increased $9 million. So.
So out of 13, we got back nine? Is that right? No?
We typically have about nine to $11 million, sometimes 12. And we're like at 17 and 18 million salary laps right now. So we've got that lapse foot in our current budget. And we've got the $10 million in case if we need it. But now, looking at our actual numbers, we only need about six and a half for the current year.
So, I, I'm not-
And remember, you have to keep in mind, we have about 400 teachers retire a year. So it's not laying them off when we get to the end of the year. We can watch it closely and we just won't allocate new positions because we know.
So help, okay, I think the other piece I'm trying to understand is the vacancies piece. And just to understand really the gravity of that particular situation, I don't think I've got any data on that. I don't know if we've received that sort of information about how many vacancies exist out there. Just to help us understand, how short-staffed are the schools right now?
Um, that's, I might let Mr. Farnsworth answer.
Do you want to come up, Mr. Farnsworth, do you want to come up here?
No, I'm not.
You may not be done, though. You may.
I can tell you quicker than I can get there. We have 50 instructional vacancies right now and about 80 non-instructional vacancies.
230.
Those 80 non-instructional, are they mostly bus drivers? Do you know?
It's a spatter, just all over the place.
So on average, we're missing like a teacher and a half per school?
You just 130 divided by 50. Is that what you were thinking?
Well, 50 instructional positions, and we've got, what, 40?
Well, 50 is about the teachers in a school.
Right, right. So I'm talking, right, so I'm talking-
We're missing a school worth of teachers.
Thank you.
They are definitely not spread across all schools.
Right, of course.
They're in concentrations. And where we've seen that in the past, the concentrations and pockets, and we- And where we've seen that in the past, the concentrations in pockets, and we could get hyper-focused on those pockets, we've got more pockets than we've ever had, is what is usually happening. Our middle schools have, have had a lot of vacancies this year, but then it's kind of, you know, it's kind of like usual. You have your pockets, and then every school has one to two floating around, and that's, that's about where we're at now. But there's just more pockets. And to answer the non-instructional question, it's not just bus drivers, it's across the board. It's custodial, bus drivers, TAs, and then pieces of other areas also.
Do you have, do you have all that maybe compiled in some sort of report you might be able to send us afterwards, or?
Um, I, I can compile it in a report. It's a moving target right now
Sure.
because you're constantly filling and processing every day. I can tell you, we're, we are processing constantly between substitutes, non-instructional, and instructional, but it, it is a grind to get folks in.
So as I'm thinking about this particular situation, I'm thinking about things also, you know, from the classroom perspective. I know one of the greatest resources teachers always love are extra support and extra hands, you know, doing. And, and I think what I'm hearing is that, well, we can't really put the extra hands in because we don't even have enough people to fill the, the minimum staffing requirements, you know, and so. But if we're hearing it's in pockets, then are there some pockets in place that you can put the extra hands in? Are there some schools where they have not rebounded back to their pre-COVID academic achievement levels and go, I mean, just because, I mean, if I'm just thinking about, you know, differentiating across the district, and, I mean, should, should these people not get support to get back to their level because somebody else is missing something, but you provide the resources for those people too, I, I don't know.
We do, we, we do kind of do in our recruitment process, we do some targeting of it, but I get what you're saying, maybe a little bit, probably more structural thing where it's just tough because every, right now, everybody's got a little learning loss, so it's hard to say who doesn't.
Sure, but I think we saw some schools take a surprising learning loss. When we saw some A-rated schools come back with a C on the, on the proposed grades, go, okay, wait a second here. What happened? That's, that's a little more than just a little summer slide, or, you know, there's, there's, there's something, something happening there.
I think you probably look, you know, I, I think we can probably combine with academic cabinet to probably get some, some good reports that kind of combine all of the issues. I think you, you, because I think attendance is a big deal also, those who attended school last year and maybe thought they could swing it on their own because they had always been successful versus the one who went ahead and trudged to school and, and, and came and got the things they wanted there.
And, and I think, I think you're, you're spot on to talk about attendance being a challenge. I've been surprised to see that our absences haven't gone down dramatically since the quarantines have ended. And so absences remain a major concern for me, and, and so is there something in this plan that can, I don't know, try to, try to target those people in some way? Obviously, we need to get them to school, and just sort of showing up at their house and getting them out of bed, you know, in the morning.
Some of that might be going on.
You know, maybe some of it is, right. But I, so I, I guess ultimately where I'm, where I'm starting to arrive is the, you know, I don't, I don't know the solution to a lot of these questions I'm asking. I'm just kind of lobbing them out there as food for thought and to think about, how can we, how can we address some of those challenges? And for me, the, the learning loss is a big piece of that.
I know Dr. Felton is, is, as soon as last week before we went on break, is, is really crunching that data with our, our school leaders. And I know they were looking at things like attendance and, and discipline and academics. I know they've been really crunching in hard with the school leaders, but she'd be the better person to speak to.
Sure.
I would like to bring up, however, that I think we are doing that in some ways because if you'll notice, we have additional funding for ESC kids, we have additional funding for ELL, we have additional funding through ELC. So all of those are opportunities to get with those children that have had some learning gains in different areas. So I, I think that's excellent. I do have a question, however, on the Performance Matters. I'm not perhaps as familiar as I should be, so my question is, I know that with the changes in state testing, we're going to be going to a statewide intervention monitoring process. Is this going to be something that's going to mesh with whatever the state decides? Or is it going to be something that we can use in addition to what they're going to suggest? I mean, how is that going to fit in to next year?
So Performance Matters is a data management system. So in terms of what the assessment system will look like, I know that we do have, or if Dwayne's here, if he wants to speak to it, other ways that we're able to deliver our LSAs and other online assessments. I'm not sure what the state is going to come up with. Again, I'm serving on that committee. We have not met yet to talk about what the ideas are for the state assessment system, but I would imagine Dwayne's team is on top of that. We know that whatever the state rolls out, if it's not provided for us, there's always a way for us to integrate those systems that they do so well with, so.
Okay.
So I just wanted to address the, one of the things that came up, and a number of people here who served on the committee, was the issue of attendance. And one of the things that they felt was important, that was, that we would look at is making sure that we have more social workers and family school liaisons, those positions that they believe have been really critical, and trying to get into homes and have more contact with kids who aren't in school was, is really one of the only solutions to, to getting to the parents. And so we've been really fortunate with our .75 mills that we've been able to collect, to be able to expand those positions. And so I know that we'll continue to look at those positions. Adding those positions as we possibly can was another key thing that we wanted to look at with these, with these funds. So I know that that's on our radar as well.
I wrote that down. I heard that on the committee meeting that they, they said that. I have two comments about that. Number three, it says the ESOL resource teacher, so I'm assuming, it says schools that qualify, so there's a, the adequate numbers for an ESOL resource teacher. But then it also says they're, they're going to work with the students, but they also provide increased parent involvement with English language learners. So is that part of the expectation of that position as well?
And Katie can certainly speak to that if you would.
So wait, there's positions there too?
Yeah.
How many positions?
I put through and starred them.
There's a lot of positions here.
Well, and my bigger concern with even positions, because I'll, I'll be honest with you, with the, with the employment, the way it is, I would love to just fill positions even if it's for a year or two, and we know what it is. But what if we don't fill them is probably a bigger concern for me. It's not necessarily that we're offering them for only two years, but there's a lot of money on the table for these after-school tutoring, summer tutoring. I mean, like, what I'm hearing is that teachers are, they need a break. And so who are these people that are going to fill these positions to tutor or to support or to provide in school, after school, during school? I mean, there's a lot of positions in here that I don't know that we'll fill. And what do we do if there's extra money left over? I'm sorry, Mrs. Pearson.
No worries. The ESOL resource teacher has been on the allocation plan for, I think, two or three years. We haven't provided that position because we haven't had the funding to do so. And also, we had it set where schools that had 50 or more students speaking the same language would then qualify for a certified teacher to support. Right now, they get an additional paraprofessional, a TA, when they reach that number, but they don't get an extra support for a resource teacher. So this position would allow for that, and we were able to add it into the ESR and lower the student number for schools to be able to receive that. We have had more ESOL students and then ESOL students with gaps due to the pandemic. So it's giving them a teacher, not just additional TA.
And that person.
That's what the position calls for, yeah. They, they might be co-teaching, going in, working with that teacher on some of the language pieces. Right now, it's a TA that goes in and kind of supports within the classroom, but to have an actual certified teacher in ESOL that's dedicated to be able to support the students, that's what that would be. And also parent outreach as well, which is something that sometimes our teacher assistants can't do. They work six hours, we're just a 7.5 of a teacher, and some of the other things that are, a certified teacher would be trained in to support a little bit more with regard to the needs of students speaking a second language.
TAs only work six hours?
Well, it's, some work six, some work seven, some work eight, but a lot of our teachers.
Is that their choice or our choice?
No, it's based on the role. With ESOL, it's mostly six-hour position.
So it's when students are there. Is that right?
Yes, student hours.
Student hours. But I, I mean, I don't know that's extending hours to have more opportunity to plan. Like, that's the other thing I think about is your caseload, and if you really want somebody to be effective, if we could give them additional time.
Their full eight-hour day?
Right.
And are we, are we giving them benefits? Are we, are we not, are we cutting their hours to not give their benefits? Is that, are we doing that game, or?
We don't, we don't strategically staff to cut benefits.
Okay, so then it seems like maybe those would be people that are willing to work if we're willing to pay them an extra two hours. You know, that might be a way to get people, is to just pay them to work.
An extra time.
Yeah, as long as we have something for them to do that's connected to teaching students. You know what I'm saying? Teachers assistants don't have same responsibilities, so we need to make sure there's eight hours worth of work for them to do. I, I wouldn't be in favor of just giving them eight hours for the sake of giving them eight hours. I want them to have student contact. So you need to look at the number of hours that the students are actually there and available for them to work with them. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I understand, but if you want after-school tutors, those would be people who could do it.
And planning, the opportunity to plan, I feel like a caseload to work with those students.
Well, that's true, but you know, different schools address that different ways. Sometimes teachers have the opportunity to be after-school tutors.
But she's just saying they don't want to because they're tired.
Some do, some don't.
Some do, I don't mean they all don't.
We won't remove that from everybody.
I worry about the, all of those things.
Right.
And I do think teachers do.
And I think they're valid concerns, like, like what we're doing, I don't think is working. I think we have some problems, you know, so if we can address those issues with the, and sometimes it's little tweaks that do that, then.
Go ahead, Mr. Farnsworth.
Well, we, we already have a, a job description for academic tutors, don't we? So, I mean, could some of those, I, I guess, I guess now you're getting back into bargaining when you're talking about changing job descriptions, but I guess, I mean, you could throw that out there, is, is there some negotiation to be had for allowing TAs to perform more duties that allow them to have a longer shift, to fulfill the work requirements? So they're not, they're doing nothing.
Madam Chair, that, that was, that was something that was discussed during the committee. We felt like that we could address that without putting it in the actual ESR plan and look at some of our procedures and conversations about how to get some of our staff that's not full-time up to full-time. So we, we've had that conversation.
Okay. Are we, are we doing, and this was something I was going to bring up, but it really loops in with what Mrs. Pearson said, and we're talking about, I heard it mentioned a couple of times, I think Ms. Cronin mentioned it, I'm pretty sure that Ms. Smith mentioned it, just our current employees and taking advantage of them wherever we can. Are we doing anything to say, okay, we're going to have this ESOL resource teacher, we will support you if you want, if you're interested in the position and going back to school? Not the science teachers at the high school level, we will support you by going back to school. We're going to invest in our employees.
Yeah, we're, we're currently looking at, and we have a program in place to get TAs to school.
Right.
We use, we currently partner with like Grand Canyon University and things like that, but now that, as you know, UCF's coming along with a more robust program. Soon as I went to Ms. Peterson with that, she's like, oh, yeah, and she just started spitting information at me. So we've already kind of got those balls rolling to make sure that we're involved in those programs also.
I heard you say in the committee that you wanted to be reasonable, that we can't send a request to the state to give people $10,000 bonuses because it's not reasonable, but would it be reasonable to say that we are improving, improving the quality of the education we provide by providing opportunities for our staff to get master's degrees? I think, I think currently, Orange County has paid for 100 teachers to get their master's degree. I don't know how they're doing that, but I don't know if that's something, I know mathematics teachers are, and the secondary programs are hard to come by. So I don't know if we're incentivizing that, or if we can incentivize that as a part of our retention program and filling some of these vacancies. So we know we have highly qualified personnel.
And that has been.
Yes, you have said that.
Several times. This would be amazing on the committee because the challenge always was, if you try to make more, how, how do they internally invest? Because they do get more in their pay.
They do get more in their pay.
For us to invest and raise the quality of our teaching for those that want that, I think would be amazing on the committee.
And I think any of our university partners, obviously, obviously, I know UCF, but I'm sure that any of the local universities would partner and bring it here, just like we used to do. And Howie, on Wednesday afternoons, you could go and get your educational leadership degree over there. They will come here to, to offer those services if we had a cohort that would be supported.
Well, we certainly have it for Paris because we have the Paris program in here. And I, so maybe under 40, under additional compensation is something that we might want to consider.
Is, is ESE certification one of those masters? We need more of those people.
ESE, ESOL, and then obviously, any reading, math, science. And I, I can tell you, because I went through the program, that UCF has a program where they pay for four of the six semesters for teachers. So that would just be a two semester investment, which is.
Worth it.
Minimal, right, minimal, so.
Well, and we've also looked at, that's like 44, where we talk about the subject area exams.
Yes, I saw that.
And that's encouraging people to add ESE to their certificate. And by the nature of adding it to your certificate and working with those kids, you're going to be exposed to additional professional development in those areas. That is more than just what you need to pass the test, but I, I would imagine that would help. So we're trying to figure out ways to cross-train and cross-certify and get people qualified to work in as many areas as they're willing to work.
I think this is also a really good time to look at the positions that we have in schools and how they're being used. And so like when we talk about family school liaisons, if they're, they're laminating and portable during their day instead of serving students, that's a problem. And I don't think that that's a problem district-wide, but I do think we have pockets of areas where these people aren't being used. And so it's difficult to sit up here and talk about the need for more people, knowing that we're in it, maybe not utilizing all of the current resources we have to the best that we can. So I don't know if it's time to look programmatically.
Totally, totally, let's look. We need more supports in the classrooms, and the kids need more supports, and the teachers need more support. That's what's going on with all this behavior stuff, right?
Right.
A lot of the positions that we have since the beginning of the year, they're getting student contact, but it might not be what they're accustomed to doing on a regular basis. It's because they've been forced into the, the classroom atmosphere and whatever atmosphere students own in campus. So like a, a school liaison, you know, you kind of have to look at, back up and look at what was going on prior to the pandemic. And, and then now it's probably way out of whack in some areas. And then what does it look like as things hopefully head towards normalcy? And just make sure that we head toward normalcy, those, those original duties that were, they were probably out seeing more families are back into the fold.
And, and, and I don't even know, like, there's something to be said about the planning component, we just talked about it, for our, for our ESOL resource teachers, but can our family school liaisons get together and talk about what they're doing? What's best practices? Can our ESE specialists, can our, can these people start to communicate or have time offered to plan? So I know that we have always offered curriculum writing over the summer, we've offered those things to teachers, but can we start supporting all, we have pockets of teachers that don't have any supports because they're kind of on an island in what they teach. So would there be a time for planning, and I know this would probably need to be bargained, but could we pay people for the time to plan or for the time to do work that we know they're doing on their own time? Could we add in days to do that? Is there a mechanism to do that? And I'm just going to be honest with you guys, I'm, I'm 100% in favor. I talked with Dr. Felton a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about, you know, taking this money with Dr. Tibbetts. What you said, just, this is a really good time to make a statement. I don't think it should be 1,000, I think it should be like 5,000 because we have to spend it in two years.
You're here.
Everybody, I'm saying bus drivers, custodians, principals, super into, everybody's been working through this. Everybody is here working. We have vacancies across this nation that we can't fill. And we have vacancies in this plan that we all know aren't going to get filled, and so.
And people are doing two jobs to try to make it work.
Right, I don't know that a teacher's assistant's going to complain about filling in for a classroom if you give them a 5,000 bonus.
Yeah, you actually do, yeah, I agree. And I agree with Stephanie about the 5,000 dollars too, frankly.
We invested at least a third of it back in our people. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that there's enough unallocated here in the lines 40 through 49 for us.
We found six and a half, and that'll be six and a half for two years, that's 12, 13. And then we know some of these positions aren't going to be filled. I found it, you're welcome.
That's it.
Sounds like a good topic for executive session, which will be immediately following this meeting.
Mr. Farnsworth didn't stop me at all.
You just got to talk fast. So, I, so if we could circle back for just a second to the, um, thinking about learning loss for, for students and, and what sorts of students, we, we've got some targeted support for a lot of folks, you know, ESE, ESOL. If you're in danger of failing, right, then you've got the tutoring in there. I'm, I'm now thinking about just maybe who was your typical honor roll student before COVID? Who is now getting maybe Cs? We couple that with the new reading curriculum, which is beyond rigorous. I mean, rigorous is like an understatement to describe some of the passages I'm seeing coming home with, with my kids in elementary school. To think, top performing students are now struggling with this curriculum. What support is there for them aside from, let's just staff the school? Or, you know, if I'm already in a school that's staffed, I just, I just don't know what the support is for kids who've gone from honor roll to Cs and Ds.
And I think it gets harder as they get older. It's the same conversation, and we talked at the committee meeting about Alex. And I'm going to tell you guys right now, if my Algebra I seventh grader who's accelerated didn't have a mother who was a math teacher at home, she would not be doing well in Algebra I. she would not be doing well in Algebra I.
That's true, we're, we're all tutoring a ton at home. Just good times.
So much tutoring.
Sorry, Mrs. Pearson.
Because we have transitioned some of these funding opportunities into ESAR. It allows more funding in our already tutoring pot that is reserved from our Title IV funding. So we're still going to be supporting students in all academic areas with tutors. And now we can do that on a larger scale because some of the funding will be able to be transitioned to support all students at a greater need. So we do still have that tutoring opportunity. We still have our summer learning opportunity that we'll be funding. It just is going to come from a different funding source, coupled with some Title I funding as well. So what you're seeing here is the above and beyond, but we still have reserve funding for the things that you're talking about as well, for any student that needs assistance. And we give that directly to the schools to be able to create a plan that works for their students in need as opposed to here's the, you know, you can only use it for your ESOL, or you can only use it for here's some money for students that you know are struggling and need some extra assistance and they can use that to support those needs that way.
We're just going to replicate you in every building.
Can I ask, can we see all the positions in here as like a, as like a spreadsheet? The way we, like, what the salary, you know, like we regularly approve, but can we see?
The allocations.
Yeah, an allocation layout? So that we know what, and then can we see, when you, when you give it to us, can you like have an extra column that says like previous position or not? You know, something that we know if, if it was previously funded and if it wasn't previously funded, so that we know what are new? Because you said some of these are not new positions, or Katie said.
Right, yes, we agree.
And when you go forward with some of the work plan too, like I know, we were talking about, Mr. Carr was talking about outsourcing BERC to get everybody up to par so that we can continue to maintain. But then I know one of the janitors spoke about maybe we could offer opportunities for the current employees to also do that work. So we'll be, as we work through this, those are things we're going to consider in that book.
I have one item.
Go. I was wondering like, what does this mean?
This actually is for Mr. Carr. And they, and item 23, you've got 4.377, the window requirement. Are those, right after Parkland, we did an assessment of our windows, they be bullet resistant? Is that what, this, this looks way low to me.
Yeah, that's because it's not bullet resistant glass. No, sir, this is part of.
So again, the question was, is this going to be bullet resistant glass? No.
We were going to do like the first floors.
Right, no, that, that was something we looked at at Parkland because, but the cost was, was.
Exactly.
Way overwhelming, I mean, just incredibly overwhelming.
Was it like 10 million or something?
More than that, sir. I don't recall the exact number, but it was, it was significant. So no, what that is for is we've got some delaminating glass where the gaskets and seals are leaking. And then we have, at one of the schools in particular that comes to mind is Rhymes. We have what I call the solarium concept, which has completely failed and fogged over. And that's on its unique wall system, so all of that would need to be replaced. Also at Eastus Heights Elementary is where I'm talking, we've got some, it's not really a clear story, but it's elevated glass where the, the gaskets, you know, have, have also, you know, have failed and I have air mitigation.
Okay, I think it's opportunity lost that we not addressed safety and security as we do this round.
I agree with that.
I'd, I'd like to see what that number is. I, I understand now because it looked really low tonight.
Yes, sir.
And as, we haven't adopted this, right? I mean, we can, we can juggle dollars around. I'd be interested what the real number would be to provide safety for our kids in the witness.
Yes, sir, I'll get that to you. I don't mind.
Okay.
Asking, you sell receipt?
Okay, and then we just talk about it, right?
I, I will just add, Madam Chair, the, the equipment and building items in ESAR were specific. They were more targeted towards environmental and air quality. So we may have to find a different funding source.
But you can provide, you can provide a window that is air quality. It meets the criteria, but also would protect a kid from being shot. How about that? That's pretty safe to keep conscious. That's all.
So moving forward with this, I know that there's a due date that's like in five days.
What? Oh, so we are skipping this.
That's what I was going to ask, is that correct? It's like December, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was like, what is he doing? What, what is the due date that this plan has to be to the state?
I believe it's the 17th.
Of December?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But they were very clear that we can ask for an extension if we need so.
Okay.
It's, it's not, we don't lose it if we don't get it in on time. So I think we're okay.
They, they did mention that the sooner you get your plan in, the sooner it'll be processed. And if you're late getting it there, you're, you're kind of.
But, but it is specific, the two year spending though, right? It's either spend it or lose it, correct?
That is true, yes.
Spend it, and you said at least you could still be writing checks, but, but that everything had been, what was the word, obligated? Is that the word you?
It has, it has to be obligated, which means that you're at the point where you're cutting a check, which means it has to be ordered in place, operational, ready to go. And you can just settle the check because, you know, it takes a couple of weeks to get checked.
And this is the plan that would begin June of 2022?
It, it could start at any, anytime.
Okay, because I know we're still completing ESAR II, right? Like those dollars are still being.
The intent was to spend the ESAR II out during the current year.
Right.
And then have this plan more targeted for the future. But that doesn't necessarily mean we can't start because there's some of the facility items, obviously, we'll need to get on quickly because it takes time to turn this around, and they have to be completed by the end of the year.
So we are having executive session after this, is that what I heard you say? So we can continue talking about some of the other items. Did anybody have anything else to bring up before we?
The bonuses or not is something that we can set aside to be bargained, correct?
Right.
Is that how that works?
Yes. Is that it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Number 46, the covering of screening and training costs for bus drivers during the 40 hours of initial training, is that something that we have a allocated funding source for? Or something that we are going to look at? Or, I don't know, because it doesn't have an amount. So where does that fall into things?
Man, that's, that's part of, uh, really a recruitment.
Okay, so it's.
Piece, so it would be, you know, we hope we can get a fleet strong, and we'll discuss bus drivers more in executive session.
Okay.
But that's something to where currently it's a, it's a hardship for any, any individual, whether they're currently employed with us or someone coming from the outside, which most people are coming from the outside, that they have to figure out a way to make ends meet during the, the training period. And that's something that, um, uh, we've identified as being difficult, Mr. Fender and Ms. Cronin. And then also kind of make it even 500 if you can, through HR, we can cover their fingerprinting and drug screening for them also.
I was just concerned because we do seem to have a problem with that. If there's a way to get new people to come in, certainly we.
And it's been a problem for a very long time. I remember seven years ago, when I first stepped on this board, first week, Kim had set me up riding around with a bus driver. And I was just shocked when they told me about how much they have to provide for on their own, waiting for a check. So I know we got to iron out the details through bargaining, but I'm happy to see that this is an item on your plan.
Okay, I, I did want to tell you guys thank you. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to watch the stakeholder meetings, but obviously the quality of the conversation was, was wonderful. But I feel like the atmosphere was also very productive and positive. And everybody that participated seemed like, I don't know, it's just a really, I, I enjoyed watching and listening to the dialogue. There was laughter, there was, everybody's input seemed like it mattered and was valued. And so I appreciate the tone that you set and that your staff provided and the listening. Because I see a lot of those items addressed in this plan. So we appreciate all of the work, it's a big undertaking. I feel like it's Brewster's Millions. Every time I say that to people, nobody's seen that movie. When he gets that mega amount of money and he has a small amount of time to spend it, that's what I feel like we're doing. It's like the race against time, so anyway, we appreciate it.
I, I also, if I could just add, I appreciate that the science and the art money didn't disappear. I was worried about that, so that's great, thank you.
And I think that the art was brought up, the performing arts was brought up by one of the stakeholders that came to the meeting. So it was smart, smart, good work overall. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you for acknowledging that. It was, I think we all left there just feeling really good about the meeting and just how collaborative it was. And I can tell you, everyone came prepared, everyone came with their list, and it was, it was very productive. And so I think that certainly the plan is a testament to that work and all the thought that went into it. So before we submit the plan, obviously we do want the, the board to take action on this. It does not require board action, but we've always been very transparent in ensuring that the board has approved the item before we submit it. So we obviously will not put it on Monday's agenda because it seems like there's still some things that you might want to have considered. Just so that I've captured your thinking, I know that, I don't think there was any opposition to providing the KMRJ IV program. We would just like more information on that as to exactly what's, which schools and what the long-term plan is. So we will plan a workshop, we'll bring that plan to you. Other than the, the, the glass, the window issue, getting to a dollar amount on that, listing of all of the allocations and the cost of those, I'm not sure how that will ultimately change the plan, or maybe it does or it doesn't, but we'll get you that very quickly. So that if there are any other changes to the plan, we can make sure that we get those back to you and that we try to get this in as soon as we can. Is there anything that I'm missing in terms of items that you would like for us to reconsider or consider that I may have neglected to add?
Holding the plan up for what I asked for because at this point the dollars.
You have your microphone on, Mr. Mathais? I don't.
Oh, there we go. I'm not certain that holding it up for what, the number that I ask, because the dollars have all been spent. And unless you started moving dollars, that at this point.
The dollars have all been spent.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
What do you mean?
All the money is, is accounted for.
Yeah, so if, um, if his item comes back at.
20 million.
20 million, we're going to have to cut 20 million from elsewhere.
Well, 16.
Right, but it's not, I mean, it's, it's been budgeted, it's not, it's just written down on a piece of paper.
That's why I'm saying there's no.
Actually, we haven't cut the checks.
That's why I'm saying there's no sense in holding this up. If, if this, if we can get it submitted and get our money allocated early, then we could deal with a budget item, moving some dollars, right?
Oh, are we allowed to do that?
I will, I will add, Madam Chair.
I was going to ask that, yeah.
It's a, it's a plan, it's not written in stone. I think as long as we keep the intent of the plan, we have the opportunity to make budget amendments down.
So were we, were you asking us to vote on this today? Is that why it became actionable?
There's no action, no, there was no action on this item. I was going to put it on the agenda for Monday for approval, but if there's any reason why we need to hold it up, we're, we're still going to provide all the information you've asked for. I'm just not sure if those are going to warrant changes to the plan or not, so.
I would not, I would not do that for that item that I'm asking about.
Okay.
That I would get our money. The sooner we get it submitted, the sooner they'll.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we shouldn't though re have this conversation after executive session.
Well, we aren't having one today, are we?
I thought you said we.
We are having an executive session. I just looked on the calendar. I literally just looked on the calendar, I'll look at it again.
Anyway, just stay kind of on task.
Did you?
I say we're good at this point.
On, on the, well, on the list though, we, we had some follow up on the instructional materials. If that was supplemental to, for instance, the reading curriculum or science or something.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, Dr. Felton, if there's somebody on the staff who could better address the question in regards to providing high quality instructional materials. We know that it was covering the math adoption, but I think the question is what, beyond that, what are the items that are, that the funds are intended for? In terms of learning loss, and I, I think we did put some software in there as well.
Could we look back at the, if we were talking about having two to three million dollars allocated for textbook adoptions overall, there were obviously components we missed when we adopted the reading and when we adopted the science the year before that. So we were looking back because we have a couple of years to adopt some of those items that maybe we didn't because we didn't have the funds for. I think the intention was to say, is that solely for mathematics? Or is that also going to include other items that we were, we overlooked because of the lack of funds with the previous adoptions?
And I, I would add, Madam Chair, that if, if we did have that need, we would find the funding source. That we, we have things in this plan that are normally funded out of the general fund, so we are freeing up some dollars, looking at the future. So if that need is there, we'll find the funding source to make sure it's. But, but I still think Mr. Dodd needs the information.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't know if the need is there, what that looks like. Because I, you know, I was, I was still just kind of thinking about how are we enhancing resources to, to address learning loss? And so if this is just buying the math adoption that we, we're already, already going to adopt, then, you know, I'm not quite sure if that addresses it. And then the other piece is, I thought we were going to maybe spend some more time thinking about the support for teachers. I mean, if I'm going back to the, to the, the ranking that people gave, and I've heard from a lot of teachers on this one is that, you know, what was third on the list for learning losses is not covered. Third, fourth on the list is not covered yet, so the highest ranking items aren't there. And I think that we were saying, well, the rationale for not including those is because we still have positions that are currently unfilled in other places. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
You're referring specifically to the paraprofessional support? Because I, I know that they've addressed it specifically for ESE, and we did talk about academic tutors as one of the, the things that we were, that, you know, was high on the list, being able to expand, expand those positions beyond just K and one, which is certainly we can look at, maybe revising the language in five.
Right, fourth, fourth on the, on this, on this voting list, on the survey, was the, the additional academic teacher assistance, right? So that's, those are your academic tutors. And then, but the, the one even above that was content intervention teachers that I guess I, I keep circling back to. We've got a reading curriculum that is the most rigorous that we ever had as a district. We have incredible learning loss that we have not experienced because we have not gone through a pandemic before. So coupled with all that, I, I just, I just don't know that hiring, you know, the job vacancies are already posted. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't get us additional resources for these people who are asking for them. And, and so I, I think that's, that's my concern.
But maybe when we look at the allocations too, it'll follow that where.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I want to make sure we follow back up with allocations. Because I want to see what's in there and then maybe. So we'll get that to you quickly, and we'll certainly go back and look at those items. We can look at, including them possibly in five, where we're talking about ESE students and providing those academic TAs. We did have that conversation, and you're right, it was high on the list of things that people were interested in.
And, and you know, maybe, maybe a different angle from that is that maybe you don't necessarily approach it from putting more people in there, but that you provide more resources for professional development so that way people can figure out how to, you know, fine tune their scaffolding to, to get students to that level of rigor. Because obviously that's the long-term solution, right? The long-term solution isn't that we have more people and then this money goes away, and then how do you provide those, for those positions? But hopefully the learning gains come back after the couple of years, right? And then you don't need those positions.
They'll come back this year.
You know, anyway, but, but really the.
It's a game.
But the, but the bigger game is, hey, this is, this is maybe some really intense curriculum that, okay, this, this kind of caught me by surprise. Okay, now I, I'm going to have to figure out how to, how to get students there to, to be successful, and what does that look like? And I know professional development only has so many resources that they can, you know, use to, to get there.
If you piggyback on that, and I think this is why the executive session would be timely, is, is it professional development or is it time? Or is it both of those coupled together? Because I feel like we, we all have the best intentions, it's just the time to sit down. Let's collaborate and talk about this, and what does it look like? And how can we meet students' needs? And I don't, I don't, I don't know that that was reflected, so I agree.
Good to.
Going once, going twice. Thank you guys very much. All right, we are on 3.02, which is our dues and fees policy.
So this is part two of our dues and fees conversation. At the last meeting, there was a proposed revision to the existing policy 6152 regarding the collection of student dues and fees. And I presented to you a chart of the high school and middle schools fees that they were asking to be able to assess in compliance with the policy. There was one change, which was that we struck through the first paragraph of the policy that was referencing courses that lead to college credit. And certainly there was no intention of assessing any fees for AP or any other college readiness course, so we took that part out. And then it was asked that Mr. Johnson looked into legality of, of collection of dues and fees. And he did send the board an email with his findings and position on that. So I am again bringing the policy back for your review and ultimate approval of the policy. Once I, like we're in a place to move forward with that, I would like to put it on the agenda for Monday if the board so chooses today that we move forward with the adoption of that policy. So I don't know if you wanted, Mr. Johnson, to, any clarification on what he said?
Whatever Mr. Dodd wants.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I think still you got Mr. Johnson's email reported back to us that the, that the statute, particularly section 15 of 1,003.01, even goes through the extent of saying that these definitions of this extracurricular. extent of saying that these definitions of this extracurricular or core curricula are for the sole purpose of designing, of designated classes, not subject to class-size requirements. But we're still using that definition, that the statute specifically says is for class-size, to decide which courses we're going to apply fees to. And I don't think that is nearly the intent of the statute.
So you just want to use a different statute? Because he also provided the language where we are, we are allowed to subject fines. I mean, that was like.
For fines, correct, yes, that's right.
Or fees, there was fees too. There's fees, fines, there was three terms that they can, like.
And it seems in multiple places, the statutes tell you what those fines or fees can be.
Except on the last one, Mr. Dodd, that it turns out, I, this was very difficult sections to read together because they were all numbered like 1,000 of this off. The red light mean on or off?
Means it's on.
Okay. They were, the numbering was, you know, it would be 1,000.02, and then 1,002.01, and then 1,001.1. The last thing that was included in there was the reference to the administrative code, the 6A-1.09983. Those are the codes that come out of the Board of Education passes, it's their rules. And as Mr. Dodd pointed out, one of the ones that were used in our policy don't, doesn't exist anymore, but it was kind of a nebulous one that didn't make a lot of sense anyway. But the 6A-1.09983, which says fees for public programs and classes not part of the required public schools, says each school may authorize fees in support of the schools and programs that are established pursuant to Section 1,000.041. And the, I think the statute that you looked at was 1,000.04.1, which is numbered almost the same way, just depends where you put the parentheses. And that one, that particular statute is a listing of essentially all the different schools that are operated by the district school board, including adult education, charter schools, and other kind of special education schools. Those are all referenced, but I mean, even that is not crystal clear because it says that, that the title of the policy is, it's for programs and classes not part of the required public schools, where that 1,000.4 includes not only public schools, but also includes the charter schools and the adult education and that kind of thing.
Correct, yes, I did read that statute, and, and I would, I would tell you that these courses are required as part of our public school system.
Right.
That students are required to have electives to graduate. They are required to take P E. And, but yet, we've got a policy that's proposed that says we can charge a fee for P E because the P E teacher wants to provide a book.
Well.
That's what the policy would allow us to do.
And I think you take all, and I understand completely what, I mean, it's grossly unclear about what it is. I mean, even the couple of places that you point out where they're attempting, there shows it to be a fee or a, or a charge, that there's, it doesn't necessarily fit right into what it is. But, you know, the general interpretation, when you have issues with the legislature and writing multiple sections of statutes that are supposed to be meshed together, you asked about the secondary school earlier, which one we were using.
That's right.
Well, I'll tell you, there's like 800 references to secondary school.
Don't we know?
And they're all inconsistent. But the, the general rule of interpretation that you would use would be that, that you have to assume that the legislature, when they passed a law, knows that they passed other laws, and they're supposed to be consistent with each other. Whether that's reality or not, that's what the courts uses in interpretation of legislative intent. And in the, some of the sections that were cited, although you can't find necessarily the specific enabling legislation that makes that fee there, the other language around that suggests that they had to be talking about a fee. They can't, they can't say, well, you can reduce the fee and there not be a fee. You have to read it in a way that makes some sort of logical sense. And, and at times, it's difficult to do, but I think in this one, there are enough references to fees and charges that you have to assume that the legislature presumed that there were these fees and charges that had already existed.
But, but the ones that they have called out are not what we are proposing.
The ones that Niola called out.
No, 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 in statute, in statute. They've specifically called out fees for non-residents. They've specifically called out.
Right, they say for non-residents.
Fees for voluntary pre-K programs. They've specifically called out fines for not returning a textbook or damaged textbooks, those sorts of things. They've specifically named fees that are there. And if we have the ability just to add to those fees, then we could say, oh, suddenly there's, we're gonna charge tuition at our schools. You, you can't do that, obviously, right?
Right.
So, so I don't know that we have the ability or the, any sort of authority to add to the list that the legislature's already designated that fees exist for.
Well, but you can't have it both ways. You can't have them being, well, it doesn't, it's not included on their list, but at the same time, you can't add anything.
But the statute.
There's no prohibition that I found anywhere in the statutes that prohibit, other than the limitation on free and appropriate education. There, there are no other limitation to being able to charge some kind of fees.
The limitation is the very exact administrative code that you read, where it references the statute that we can provide for, that fees are provided for those programs, referencing that statute, the ones that I just named. So we can't add to that list.
Why not?
Because it says you can, you can charge fees for the programs as designated in that particular statute. You go to that statute and you read it.
Well, it says, yeah, I mean, it says you can provide that, those fees and charges for that particular purpose.
That's right.
But then it also says under the general supplemental rules of the school board, that it can, it uses the word fees and charges, it doesn't limit it to specific ones. And that's in, what was that, 1,000? Let me see. That's in the, oh, it's 1,000. Oh, 1,001.41, the general powers of the school board, that's where it talked about entering into agreements for accepting credit charges, debits, and compensation for services, tuition and fees. They even have tuition listed there. I'm not sure what tuition is doing in that particular statute, to tell you the truth. But then they have also in 43, in 438, says the district school board may adopt policies and procedures governing attendance, monitoring, and checks, truancy, fees, fines, and charges imposed on students. And doesn't limit it to a specific kind of fee or charge.
Well, the tuition would probably circle back to, if you were attending one of those voluntary programs, pre-K programs that were authorized to charge for, then that would, there would be tuition for that. But 1,001.41 doesn't actually give us the ability to charge the fee, it just gives us the ability to enter into credit card agreements to collect money. The fee still has to be authorized by law. You can't just.
Right.
Just because we can.
It does have to be authorized by law.
Process a card, we can't process it for anything.
But it's not a limitation on that, that you can't do it for that statute because there's a free education.
Oh, I'm not, I'm just saying that that statute doesn't allow, allow fees. It just says that we can use, we can enter into agreements to, to collect money by credit card or debit card.
And, and there's, there's statutes, you know, didn't, don't quote the whole 10 chapters that consist of the education code, but the statutes that deal with the powers of the school board to do different things would include charging for items where those were not specifically taken over by action of the legislature. And like I said, I went through a search of the education code and found no specific prohibition against the school board charging different kinds of fees for services, as long as they didn't, weren't in opposition to some other legislative intent like free So, I mean, I, I don't just, it's not very clear.
So, so then I guess I circle back to, if, if you're still unable to arrive at a conclusion based on all the statutes that I have referenced, then, then do we need a different opinion? Do we need one from the attorney-in general, somebody who has some authority to speak on this?
That's certainly an option for you to do. I think I noted that there was, we had to be concerned about it being timely and relevant.
But, but really, the bigger question is, if we have zero intention of charging a student to buy a book for P E, or we have no intention to say, to tell somebody in a, in a career education class that you need to go buy some, some paperback books because they're gonna be reading in the class, then why have this policy? Why, why propose it? Or if we have no intention of telling a kid they gotta go out and buy new basketballs for the P E equipment, for the P E program, and we're gonna charge you a $5 fee because we need to buy new balls, then, then why, why is this even proposed? I, I don't get it.
So I am of the opinion that if, once we determine whether or not this is legal going forward as a board, we can just, I don't know, I'm channeling my inner Mrs. Cunningham that it needs to be voted and moved, right? Because I feel like we can, I mean, you and I are, I think you know that, you and I are complete opposite ends of the spectrum, other than the legality on imposing fines and, and having them be a daily life. I have many concerns, of which include, we have, we have charter schools in this area that are gonna offer these amazing programs because they have the ability to charge their kids' fees for dissecting pigs in their A P anatomy and physiology courses. I just, I feel like we're gonna limit the quality of the education that we provide if we take this policy out completely and disarm our principals.
No, that, that's where it becomes incumbent on us as a board to do that.
Mark, we just talked about the money we don't have. We've had this conversation at this table seven years now, we've talked about how.
But we, but we have some schools where their free and reduced lunch percentage is so high, so high, and we're gonna say, only in those, so in those schools, you're gonna, you're gonna charge a fee, those kids can't pay it. So I'm sorry, your biology lab doesn't get to do a dissection. Meanwhile, you come down to this school, and their free and reduced lunch percentage is much lower, and you say, ah, these people can charge a fee, and their kids are gonna be able to pay it so they can do these labs. No, it's gotta be equitable for every, they all have to have access to that.
But it's not.
Right.
It's just not, it's reality, and it's been that way for 40 years here, at least.
Well, then let's stop hiring new.
We are saying also that if, if they need it, that we will, if a student is unable, so if you have a science lab and you have 15 kids that can't afford it, but six that can, the six that can will pay for it, the others won't, and we'll supplement that. That's what the budget is, that's what the school budget is for, that's what they can allocate for, that's what they can fundraise for, and nobody's being told no. Nobody's being turned away because they can't pay the fee.
We don't have a good mechanism, we don't have unlimited resources.
We don't, and the thing I did.
No, but we can't, we can't tell a kid to take A P biology.
Resources, you have to choose.
Right, so here's, the reason I should say that about Mrs. Cunningham is I just feel like we have beat, we are kicking this horse around this boardroom, like we're gonna keep kicking it. I don't think you're gonna change my mind, I don't think I'm gonna change your mind.
No, but I'm, I'm speaking on, okay, and I think, I think maybe something gets lost in when we, when we start taking away the demographic of the people that we represent and keeping that in the forefront of our mind, that because our county is so ridden with poverty, the entire district qualifies for free and reduced lunch. That's how poor we are. I mean, we're talking the median income of Lake County is $54,000. We're talking the median income of a Leesburg household is $37,000. And we're gonna say, you need to pay a fee so that way you can do a dissection in your lab. Absolutely not.
So can we go back to the, to the chart that the high school principals and the middle school principals spent a lot of time putting together? Because to your point, Mr. Dodd, there was no intention that we were gonna be charging for science or any core courses. They were just asking, in accordance with this policy, to be able to assess fees for specifically C N A courses, an option, an optional uniform policy or uniform fee for parents who wanted to purchase the school P E uniform, but there was no requirement that they do so. The culinary program, because those items are specific, that the students keep those items, and again, they don't have to purchase them from the school, they can purchase them on Amazon if they so choose. The art course, which again is one of those extracurricular courses that is defined in that policy.
For class-size purposes.
But it is the only place in statute that they defined a core versus an extracurricular activity.
But that sentence on there specifically says this is only for the purposes of class-size requirements. That sentence is there in statute. It's part of that statute.
Okay, and remember that the policy also, I know that Mr. Johnson spoke with one of the attorneys with Niola, that said that, yes, they stand by this policy, they say that this policy.
They stand by, but the problem is, they also stood by a bunch of policies that have references that were deleted 10 years ago. So just because they stand by it, doesn't mean it's quality work.
So the, the items that they're asking were specifically to, they're limited, and they involve no core courses, and they, they do not assess any fees for science or science labs. They're looking at lockers, the band fee, replacement, student I D. So these are not things that are.
So, so many of these things are already allowed under our policy. People can already charge people for a uniform that's not mandatory. They can already charge people to go on field trips, for example. They can already charge things for, for things that kids are keeping. So I'm not sure that, you know, my concern about the proposed policy is that it's just now so broad and vague that it leaves the door open for any P E teacher out there to go, hmm, this looks like a great book, I'm gonna require all my kids to read this book. And based on the school board-approved policy, I can tell you all, now go on Amazon and buy this book, or give me $12, that way I can go buy the book for you. Okay, and every career education class, every culinary class, or every, you name it, hey, we wanna use, we wanna, we wanna use this other textbook. It's not provided by the district because the district doesn't have funds. Hey, students, go out and buy your books. Now suddenly, we've got a bunch of college kids buying their own books.
Okay.
It's just way too broad.
Which is certainly not, and I do agree that it is broad, so, which is why we have the chart, which I've.
Is the chart a part of the policy?
I, I thought that I was. I'd actually make this administrative directive to say that the board has, in compliance or as permitted with this policy, these are the things that schools are limited to charging, which is all the principals have been asking for.
But the problem is, I think administrative direction only goes so far, that for one, next administrator comes in, I don't know that this, this is gonna remain. I mean.
Well, the same could be said for the next board that comes in.
No, but the, but they would actually go through a process of changing it, versus.
They could do that.
But this, this would have no process through the board. The new, next superintendent could come in and say, yeah, well, we already have a policy that allows all the career technical students to have to buy their own books, let's do that. All the health, P E, I don't know, let's have the kids go buy books. Like, I, I, if we have zero intention of that, why are we putting that in a proposed policy? It shouldn't. So, and then the, the challenge also is, I think administrative direction, you, you get it for, for a short time, and then after a while, it fades out. I mean, we go, we look at recess. I mean, we've had administrative directions on recess and clarifications, but I know that teachers are still withholding it from students as a punishment.
No, they're withholding it for all sorts of reasons.
For all sorts of reasons. And, and that's a direct violation of state law. So I guess, I mean, I don't have, I, I don't know why some of this is necessary, why we would need to have a policy to say that you can charge a P, for a P E uniform that you can already charge for.
So omit this section.
So, so I.
You don't wanna put this into law, because then the numbers become.
That's a flaw.
That's right, that's right. So it almost seems like, it almost seems like you don't need to make any changes to the policy. I guess the only thing that would, you know, because the P E stuff doesn't change, the culinary stuff doesn't change.
So if you'll remember this.
There is, there are changes to the policy that are being, that's being proposed.
Right. And that's the problem, because under the existing.
Well, it doesn't have to really do with.
No, that's not my proposed changes.
There, there are changes to do with homeless people and to get a waiver based on financial need, I believe.
Yeah, but if we didn't change, if we kept in the requirements by statute with the McKinney Act, et cetera, there's, there's a line in here that says such charges would be made on expendable items such as magazines, workbooks, material, paperbacks, and laboratory supplies, supplies, materials, like it's all in there. So if we didn't change the policy, it wouldn't, it wouldn't address your concerns.
It's, 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 this is a decision that the board has to make, when the law is not clear, it's a board decision, and the board has to decide what we wanna, how we wanna go forward. And I guess I'm not in favor of taking away all, all the opportunities for our kids, because I've already seen what happens, and I'm already hearing from parents, like, and teachers, and that things can't be funded right, and now there's so much fundraising to do for every single program, and, and it's too much, there has to be some fees in place, or the programs can't be offered, and they're all underfunded right now because they couldn't even fundraise last year. So, to me, we broke it, and we just need to fix it. And it was more fixed the way it was than the way, than what's going forward. So if this is a compromise to go forward, I'm fine with it. But I don't, I think we broke it. So we have to fix it.
The proposal is broken.
Well, no.
The proposal allows every.
What happened at the beginning of this school year broke it. It, it caused a problem, and, and our schools have no idea how to recoup that problem. We don't have, we're not giving them the funds, or they're unable to give the funds, or something, but the programs are going to crumble if we don't. And I'd rather a teacher ask for 10 bucks so that my kid can be in a school play, and if I can't, I can go to the principal, than not have a school play. That's, and that's what it comes down to. Like, bam, bam, that's it.
And I don't think any of that goes away.
Can I, do you mind, Mrs. Cunningham, or Mr. Tobias, do either of you have anything?
Well, I guess, I'm sorry.
No, you, please.
Mr. Dodd, can you just, for me, verbally say what you would be willing to consider as having, what the policy should state? I mean, I hear, I understand your concerns, but is there a way that we can savage this policy and you can be okay with it?
I, I think you, I think you go back to what is here. I think you, I think you remove the proposal of all the, all these green and red lines in here, and that the school board is gonna provide the necessary textbooks and/or electronic textbooks, as stated here. I, I don't think you add in all this, these new verbiage about which courses that we're gonna cover that for, because that's not the appropriate statute that we pulled that
So basically, you're good if we do away with this?
Yeah, if you, if you go back to the way.
And would you replace it?
Because I think, I think there's this, there's this myth out there that what we did this year removed all abilities for programs to charge fees, but that's not true. Because, for instance, if you are, if you're in band, all right, and you're gonna go take a trip or something, field trips, absolutely, 100%, students pay for that, right? You're not expecting that, that, that the school or that the board is covering that. I guess you go back to, for instance, PE uniforms. I, the challenge before was that it was, because schools held a monopoly on the PE uniforms, they could charge whatever they wanted, and then, basically now, students were using, were forced into buying the school new basketballs or soccer balls, or nets, or whatever, whatever it be, right? But now we said, you're gonna sell it at cost, or if you're gonna mark it up, that it's not, the students aren't required to buy it from you. I can go on the other market, I can get myself the athletic shorts and shirts, right? So I'm not forced into this. Same thing with culinary. For instance, my daughter takes culinary at the high school. The school sold her a chef's coat and hat for $17, all right? But the proposal on here says, that's gonna cost 40. I go, why is it costing 40, right? So I guess, once again, that goes back to, well, different schools provide different things. Maybe this one's not all monogrammed and embroidered, and, and so, but you just give students an option, right? Okay, so if I don't wanna buy the $40 chef's coat that's, that's, you know, because I'm gonna take this for a year and then be done, then I, I go on Amazon, I buy myself a cheap chef's coat that allows me to, to function, right? So I'm, once again, we have not handcuffed them to allow them to do those things. I think where it gets challenging, though, is then when you get into all these other things where the students are now supporting the academic program, and then you get into the equity piece, all right? Because you get some schools that are in more affluent sections, those students can pay the fees, and they've got the highest fees among anybody. They're charged, they're the ones charging $100 for a course, and then you go up to a different end of the county, and they're charging $5 or $10. So you get, then you get a range of parents going, wait a second here, I don't want the $100 course.
Is, is there an example that you can give me or?
Yeah, so, so a few years ago, when this first came up to us, when there was a grandparent who said, why is my kid paying $100 for band at Claremont Middle? We had, we said, that's a good question. I think Sherry had done the homework, because there was also a media inquiry that followed on that. She'd done the homework and found out, here's what everybody charges for band, and it was, it was all over the place. Some people charged nothing, some people charged $100. So then your ability to be in band, essentially then, is dictated by your zip code, right? Or what sort of experience you get. Because certainly the schools say, if a kid can't afford it, we're gonna cover it, okay? But.
Right.
At the same time, you say, in an area, let's say, where your median income is $50,000, are these parents necessarily coming forward saying, I can't afford it? Nobody wants to be that one who comes forward and say, I don't know, do I, $100 to take a public school course, right? I, I don't know, that's.
Can I just stay with you for just a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're talking.
Sure.
So, the $100, that was not just to participate. Wasn't that field trips? Because I asked, I questioned.
Sometimes.
I questioned the 100, by the way, for, for middle school. And, but that included activities that they would, it was up to like $100. And so if you, it's apples and oranges to say, one school, they may not go on these trips to, that may or may not be necessary, by the way, for middle school, because when I was in middle school, we played the drums, we, we went to different elementary schools to try and encourage, recruit, but that was the extent of it, you know what I mean? So.
But, but that's, and that would, that logic would, would be great if that was, yes, your $100 is gonna get you some field trips, because, okay, instead of collecting.
That's what I was told specifically that it would get.
But that wasn't always happening. No, 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 no. So there were schools in, in my district where people were charging $100 for their band program, and that they weren't going on trips.
Okay, that would be kind of problematic.
They were buying instruments for the school with some of that money, making repairs to school-owned instruments. And so then, then you get to.
So that's an administrative problem, actually.
Yeah, it is.
This doesn't say, this $100 doesn't say anything about instruments. It was, it was up to, and it was to cover trips, which is very reasonable to me, that if, if, if a school, if my son was an amazing musician, would I want him to go to a school where they were, were showing, displaying their talents and getting used to it? I'd be willing to pay that. If I couldn't pay for it, for the benefit of my child, I would tell the administrator, and they would make arrangements. So I think that we can't, the concern is, I'm hearing all the conversation sitting over on this side, is if we end the fees, then programs will dwindle, and they won't give our kids the opportunity. Where we have the safety net is that, that no kid, and, and I don't disagree with you, someone could be too prideful, but no one's too prideful, in my opinion, when it comes to their kid. So that's what I believe about that. So I think that we, that if we end fees, that we are going to diminish programs, because we know we can't afford it.
But we're not ending fees, though. See, this, this, if, if we're truly covering.
I thought at one point you said you wanted to do away with the policy.
You, you talked about one minute.
No, 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 the proposal, because the proposal, the, the current policy still allows field trips, and requires students to pay for those field trips. That, that's never been a question of mine.
The current policy as of this, this, as of this year, the one we just passed?
That's right, that's right. So, so if you are a band, for example, and the middle school band fee says not to exceed $100, and if you are using that $100 to go on trips, all right, yes, it's students paying for field trips, absolutely. So, I mean, I guess does it make a difference when you say, we're gonna go on four trips, each one costs $25, you can pay your $100 now?
They're not all four trips.
No, but, but that's what.
Okay, I, I think I understand where you at. Let me just say this. I, I did have two children that were those nerdy band people.
I'll re-simplify that remark.
They went to two different high schools. One high, both in Lake County. One high school, the band director had the philosophy that doing well in competitions was important to him. So he took them all over the state. They went to tremendous competitions. That costs money. So his fees were a little bit higher than the other school. I guess I'm kinda of the opinion that, well, and at that particular school, if there was a student involved that wasn't able to pay the band fees, the administration and the band director provided other avenues for that student to come up with that money. For example, they could do fundraising, their parents could work in the concession stand. I mean, there was just a whole list of things. So while I absolutely agree with you about the equity, I mean, I, I fully understand that, but I think, too, we have to realize that you and I are not gonna be able to do away with equity problems. The only thing that we can do is try and make sure that we establish policies and vote for things that are gonna create as level playing field as we can. And I think we have done that, when we've said that we're gonna provide these resources in other ways. Most band boosters, they step in. I don't think we're gonna get to a point where there's going to be any student, because my parents can't pay $100, that I'm not gonna be able to participate in an activity that I have the talent for. I think some of the things that you brought up are good, and they're valid, but I think we're gonna have to depend on the administrative people to take care of those things. For example, if the superintendent issues an administrative directive, then I think she and her staff will take care of anyone who doesn't follow those instructions. And I think you and I, as a board member, probably will have to, you know, allow her to do that. So I'm afraid that while I agree with you a lot, I can't say that we just have a policy that says there are no fees, because I think we'll hurt the system by doing that. Because if we do that, like you said, we don't have the money. What's gonna happen?
Once again, though, the policy that I'm asking for is not that you can't collect money for anything. It's that, it's, it's not a policy that leaves the door open for any career technical education teacher to say, hmm, boy, this other textbook could be far superior. Can y'all send in $85 so I can buy them? Oh, oh, wait a second here, we don't have enough health books for the class. Hmm, the district has adopted one, but I think those books are like a decade old. Hey, can you all send in $55 for a, for a health book? But that's what the green allows to have.
But I can't imagine any administrator.
But don't we have this list, this is the list that you're saying?
But that would not be in policy.
I'm sorry.
That's all we're asking for.
Huh?
That would not be in policy.
He wants, he wants to write policy about this, so that it never occurs again.
I want policy that matches our intention. That's all I want.
Well, would you be okay if you didn't have the fee part, because that could change over time? But these are the, these are the items that you.
But that, so that's this here. So just make this match what we want to actually charge for.
Okay, why don't you write it?
I, I read it like three times, and I thought it did.
It doesn't, but it doesn't, because it says that we can charge, they're long sentences. The board may levy certain charges to students to facilitate the utilization of other appropriate materials and/or activities not required by core curricular courses, as well as fine arts, performing arts, career education. Okay, so we've removed the part about college credit, because we realized every AP student could be on the hook for buying a book. Such charges would be made on expendable items such as magazines, workbook materials, paperback selections, supplies and materials for clubs, independent study, or special projects, career programs, and school slash district-sponsored trips. So, so my, my concern on this particular one is that this policy doesn't match our intention. Our intention is not for kids in all these career courses, or for teachers in all these career courses, or in, or in PE, or you name it. Say, hey, boy, I'd like to bring in 10 more books, or I'd like, I'd like.
But that's not what may means. May means may.
Yeah, that they may.
Shall means will.
No, it doesn't mean they will, but.
No, like, I'm saying, like, it is a legal term. May means may, and therefore, they may do this. It doesn't mean they shall, doesn't mean they will. It means they might, if it's necessary. And then that would be up to the principal, or the, and the parents should tell the board if there's a problem with that, or the principal, or.
But why, why allow the problem to be in the first place?
Because by eliminating it, you, in law, you actually make it stronger, in my opinion. So that's one thing we actually did with recess. We wrote it specifically without, do not, we never put in, do not take away recess for punishment, because the statement's stronger with it. So you write law specific to the statement. I didn't need to say, don't take it away for A, B, C, and D. It's the law. You don't take it away for A, B, C, and D. The law is this. So you write it like, this the law.
But this policy, though, because it's so.
So rewrite it, fix it.
It's so broad. Yeah, I think you take those green lines out and go back to what you had, because what you had allowed people to pay for trips.
But what we had, you're saying the one we passed at the beginning of the school year, but that's the one that broke things. So we need to go back to the original one, and like rewrite that one, and, and write it the way that you feel, and, and you could write it, and, and write it the way you feel it would be intended, and they intend.
And, but I would also say that you've now heard from four people who are continuing to say that we don't wanna take away the opportunity for teachers or any school to levy certain fees. So, so I don't, I'm not encouraging you to write a policy that the four of us disagree with either, like, if I'm being honest with you.
Well, and I'm not sure that Neola then will.
Right, will back it.
Will acquiesce and back it.
Right.
So we have, we're at a position where Neola has agreed to these changes, correct?
Yes.
The Neola person has agreed to the list that's on the first page under fees. Oh, I don't know that they've seen that list.
Yeah, and they're. That's not policy, though, that's.
And they're the same things that are listed as some of the.
But the concept is that we use the guidelines from the various statutes for the core curricula versus the extracurricular courses, the way the language is in the first paragraph of that one. And they said that certainly they understand the, the conflict about the fees being authorized specifically anywhere, but they're willing to guarantee the policy if they have an opportunity to review it and okay it before we approve it.
So if you want to, I mean, this is obviously a workshop discussion. If you wanna work on it and come back with maybe some proposed change that we could all look at to see if it still meets what, what the four of us are, because I liked what you said, Dr. Burns, about when it's not clear, it's up to us to dictate. So if you wanna bring that forward or attach it to a statute, I think we'd be happy to look at it. But I also think that there's been a delineation, I think, that you can hopefully see.
Well, I, I think, I think what I'm, I'm seeing, and I guess I'll begin by, yes, I'd be happy to put this in greater writing. I guess I, I'm still unsure of how the existing policy does not allow for the fees of the things that we're, we're asking for fees to be collected on, but.
Well, in the meantime, could we go back and look at the, the original policy, too, everybody in here, so that we can come in here to speak to both of them?
Then, so, so I, I mean, yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to, I mean, if we give some time, put, kinda, kinda redline this a little bit and throw, throw it back out to you to, to make it, you know, more in line, I think, with what our intention is. I, I'm just, I'm just nervous that our intention is not what we're, what we'd be voting on.
The, the part that I, I hear you continue to referencing, and I'm wondering if, and I am fine taking it out, is the sentence that says that such charges will be made on expendable items such as magazines, workbook materials, paperback selections. Taking those things out, because there's certainly no intention of us charging for those things.
But, but then doesn't it make it even broader, though, that?
Well.
Because, because then you could charge anything you want PE. You can say, oh goodness, we need, we need new basketball hoops. Everybody's gotta bring in $1,200. You know, I mean, the, the problem is that I think policy is, is supposed to outlive us, and the idea is that you, you just want it to match your intent. Why would, I mean, when you're, when you're left at this crossroads of, of voting on something, why would you, why would you vote for something that is not what you intended for it to even be? You know, sometimes it happens over time, as, you know, maybe culture changes, or as practice changes within an organization, but, you know, from the get-go, I don't know why you'd, you'd vote on a policy that says that basically every CTE kid would be, could be required to provide for their own book. I guess the other piece on that, though, that has, has been some topic, as I've, I've had a chance to, to talk to a lot of constituents on this one, has been the topic of class dues. And I know that these class dues are the source of money that is used, you know, for instance, you gotta cover graduation, and, and, you know, all these, all these senior-type events, and, and people are participating in those. I think the one that has come up, though, is about, for instance, you get proms and dances, homecoming dances, and things of the sort, and now suddenly, every student is required to pay into putting on a homecoming dance, even if they're not attending.
Is that how class dues now work? That's new.
No, that, that's how they've been, they, they've.
Well, it's new since I.
They've adjusted it a little bit, but yes, they've, it's kind of a, as I described it to me, kind of a savings plan, because the senior year is so expensive. So as a, if I'm a ninth grader, I pay my $20, that $20 is going to stay with my class to help cover the cost of proms and other things. And remember, proms are not specific to, to just seniors. And so that, when they get to their senior year, they've kinda paid for a lot of those costs that they're going to incur in that senior year, and they're not having to pay this large sum to cover all of that. So.
But not, but not every kid goes to prom, and they buy prom tickets if they wanna go. So if, so for instance, I guess, you know, if, if I'm a student, and I have no intention of going to prom, I have no intention of going to homecoming, why should I be paying for her dance? I don't know. And then I'm required to do so.
Are the class dues mandatory?
But, but the thing is, that, that you're not doing it just to go to the dance. You're doing it because it's going towards your graduation. It's like, it's like, it's like a package.
No, no.
So, and then, do you wanna complicate it?
Some of this is just taking her.
Do you wanna complicate it by going, it's five bucks, but you gotta declare if you're gonna go to the prom?
No, 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 don't make it that complicated. That's not where I'm going with this. I'm just saying, okay, you get all these senior festivities, that's fine, that's fine. But like, the freshman, the, the homecoming dance that everybody can go to, you're already buying a ticket for that. So you say, hey, instead of class dues going to that, then your tickets, the people going to that dance, since you're selling a ticket for it already, you're already having to pay something to go to it.
Okay, so.
Why is that?
Let me just interject that the cost of a prom ticket right now is pretty expensive. The, the rental of a location, particularly outside, setting up tents, setting up chairs. So now we're gonna take the median income of $50,000. If you wanna go to prom, you're gonna pay $200 a ticket, so.
I'm already paying for it.
Well, because you're paying for it across time. So I just, I, again, I, these are like institutional things, and I hear you challenging that, I'm not opposed to it. I I feel like I'm, I am challenging myself a little bit to hear what you're saying, but I also am really, we are going to take away opportunities for students to participate in high school that they don't get. If we say, if you don't want to go, what if they decide to go to homecoming at the last minute? I just, it's not just about...
Then they buy a ticket.
But the homecoming tickets are going to be outrageous. Nobody's going to be able to afford to go to homecoming.
So the people who aren't going have to pay for the homecoming dance for the people who are going.
They're not just paying for homecoming.
No, 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 and that, but that's where I'm honing in on.
We cannot do this, Mr. Dodd. We can't dictate to schools how they're going to spend money.
If you want that, you're taking away all of the community in the community.
Community pours into these high schools. This is tradition.
But, see, the two ideas are not at odds. See, I think it's an unfair logic to say that...
That resources are limited?
No, no, that's, hey, you're almost making the assumption that I'm opposed to there being these events and that they should go away, and that's not true at all. That's not my stance. My stance is, though, that, okay, what allows us to require a student attending a public school to have to pay for some decorations for a dance that they're not even attending?
The same thing that requires people who have students that don't attend public school to pay taxes on public schools. I mean, that is, this is...
That was the same thing that was going through my mind.
Right, like I have to pay for things.
You're paying for the better good.
Yeah, like legitimately, we're paying...
For the dance.
I've never used the fire department.
Yes, yes.
The dance.
You're the experience of being a senior.
I have to pay for your dance.
Yes, you do, because it's the experience of being a senior. It's not just about your kid.
No, 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 I'm talking nine through twelve. I'm talking nine through twelve. I'm not talking anything senior. I get the whole idea.
Right, but your kid eventually will be a senior, and when that money gets saved up, it'll be used on...
No, you're still missing it. You're still missing it. Dance is for freshmen. Dance is for freshmen.
Yeah, they do have homecoming.
That's great.
Yes.
Are we really in the minutia here, where we're managing high schools?
It all goes back to philosophically of the free public school.
It may be philosophical, but we're doing a policy.
That's right.
And the idea that we're going to debate whether or not Leesburg High School charges twenty dollars seems a little bit...
That's not my debate. My debate is, should kids who are not going to an event be required to pay to put on that event?
Are class fees mandatory?
Yes.
If you were part of a cohort in a class, then yes, you were part of a greater good.
Right.
Yes, yes, the answer is yes to me.
Philosophically, I agree with that statement.
I do, too.
Yep.
So I'm...
I believe in taking care of others.
Right, I'm going to, just because it's been an hour on the conversation, we have a little bit of movement forward. We're going to review the old policy as it stands before the changes were made. Mr. Dodd, if you would like to draft something to bring for us to consider as well. Can we put this on the next workshop or a workshop coming up to revisit the topic?
Sure.
I think we need to. I think we need to. I don't think we're at a point yet where you're comfortable...
No, not at all.
...fill something or anything.
No, not at all. Not when we're going to tell because they're going to buy their textbooks.
The black part was the old policy, right? And the green and the red or what?
I don't know, the red is...
I don't know. We have like three policies now. We have the original one, then we passed one at the beginning of the year, and that, in my opinion, it broke things, and then we're trying to fix it now, but this is like the third version.
And we're going back to the first one.
Yeah.
I got to share.
I'm going to ask the Neola people to put together the one that we have now and whatever changes are proposed now to that one.
And I asked this challenger to text, you know.
Okay, because that way there'll only be one document that you're looking at, and it'll show the changes. And Mr. Dodd, if you want to help make some of the changes that you were...
I would love to take a stab at it. I think I understand exactly what the intention of the board is, and I would love to craft a policy that captures what our intent is, and I think what we've got doesn't do that. So yes, if I can just get a clean copy of our current policy, I'd be happy to redline, greenline, and bring that back to the board to take a look at.
Perfect. Okay. We did have, we have another item just as far as our committees go, which I don't think will take very long, and I lost my agenda. It's in here somewhere. The superintendent was going to add an additional item.
It was an item that we were trying to get on the agenda, and because offices were closed last week, we weren't able to amend the agenda. But we do have a copy in front of you. There are some extra ones, I think, floating about. In regards to, this was a timing issue, and so Ms. Randall is... Oh, there she is. She moved on me.
Could we take five minutes? Would you guys mind? I need a restroom break. Okay, so we'll take five minutes, and then are we going to skip the next one? Are we going to stick with the order that we're in? Okay, we'll just stick with the order. I don't think the committee list will take long, and we'll be back in five minutes.
Good.
So as it's day end.
We'll do the first thing then, right?
Yeah, we'll do that after. I didn't think the committee list would take very long. Of course, mine's closed, but I'm just going to ask you guys, other than the required changes where the chairman or the vice chairman serve, were there any committees you would like to serve on that you are not? Or are there any committees that you?
No ma'am.
I think Molly needs more committees.
No ma'am.
Is there anyone?
Sure, you want one?
That's what I was going to ask. Is there anybody that didn't particularly want to do a committee there on? Are we leaving it as is? And then we'll address appointments if there's any.
I have no problem with my list. I don't want any extras, but I do have one. If anyone would like to, you know, if you just feel a burning need. I don't even see. Oh, this Lake Sumter Metropolitan Planning Organization.
That people that have served on that.
Well, they postpone it, and you need a secretary to just keep up with how many times they postpone.
Yeah.
But I have no problem. I will keep it. So I'm good.
Okay. I was gonna, okay.
I did hear Mr. Miller, he wants to stay on the fourth quarter.
Okay, good. I was going to ask that next. Is everybody's appointments? Is there any changes in regards to the audit committee appointment? Is everybody good with the audit committee members?
Yes.
Calendar committee?
My calendar girl. She, she's moving. So I'm putting Cheryl Smith and Natalie. Cheryl Smith. I'll give you her address.
Naming committee? Any other changes? Additions, deletions? You're all still looking down. Good, good. All right. See? I knew that would be fast and easy. All right, superintendent, additional road planning, real estate update. Thank you.
This is actionable, right? This item?
I don't think this is a special meeting.
Is it actionable?
No, no, there's nothing actionable.
I said special meeting at the beginning, because in my head, it was special when we meet. I don't know why. It's just a workshop. Sorry.
I kept, I kept waiting to see. Well, it was actionable.
What is actionable? Surprise, nothing.
It was not that special.
Board Superintendent, thanks for the opportunity to come forward. In real estate, it's just been a busy couple of weeks, and there's some things that I'm going to put on the agenda that we have not talked about before. And so I just wanted to give you an update. I will try to keep it pretty quick. We have two potential property sales, and if you can go to the next slide. The first is, you should be pretty familiar with this. This is one of our northwest vacant properties. The board has declared it surplus. We have a resolution. We have had an offer on it for $180,000. Yes, $180,000. This is 20 acres. It is, you know, in real estate, they say it's location, location, location. This is not prime location. It is near Harbor Hills, but it has legal access issues. It also is subject to the oil and mineral rights reservations issues. So this is an offer from an adjacent property owner for the $180,000. So we are working through the contract on it. Actually, we have received a contract, and our attorney has approved it, our real estate attorney. And so I was going to put it on the agenda for December 13th, and wanted to make sure that there were no questions or concerns first before we do that.
Go on.
I have no concerns. This is actually a good deal.
Just imagine the shape of school you could build on that property. It would be very innovative.
It would be very innovative. It'd be an interesting little arch over top to go between the two points.
It'd be a walkway.
And this was one that was donated back as part of the Pine Tree Project back in the, they had been 40s. So yet another one to go away. The next slide is for, this one is new, and there is approximately three quarters of an acre that was purchased with the warehouse and grounds property. It is on the other side of State Road 19. As far as I can tell, it's never been developed. We've never done anything with it since we purchased the property in 1961. They did sell a little portion of it. You can see there on the north side, they sold some to the property owner behind it for an access road back in, I think, like 1991, but nothing since then. So we have an adjacent property owner who has come to us to say that he is interested in it, and I don't really see any reason not to sell it. We will, this is one of the things that I would be bringing a resolution to the board on the 13th, and one of our Edplant surveys that basically says that we're declaring it surplus. We don't have any use for it. So, and then work through an appraisal, come up with an asking price, and then bring the contract back to you, probably, hopefully, in January. Okay? Any questions on that one? All right. This is, there's two potential purchases. So the Eustis Elementary School for the expansion, there are two remaining residential parcels that we have not picked up. I have been in touch with one of the property owners. I've been in touch with both of them, but one has indicated an interest in selling. He had asked $200,000 for the property, and we have an appraisal for 160 on Wednesday before the holiday. He verbally agreed to 185. Again, location, location, location. So, you know, I think it's probably a pretty good compromise price for us. So I would like to go back to him with a formal contract, and then I would bring that to the board, maybe on the 13th of December, maybe in January. But unless there's any questions on that, I will move forward.
Yeah, I, I'm curious.
The family is, they're struggling a little bit, and they have indicated that they really need to, to come up with a plan for themselves before they come back to us. So they are aware that we.
That's the second one.
Yes.
Yes, I was asking about the other one.
Yeah. So.
So what is the plan? Like, I know we want the, what is the plan? Like, what is the goal to purchase enough to, I mean, I know the goal is to purchase enough land to rebuild Eustis Elementary, but like, where is that land that we're looking?
So if you, I don't have a pointer up here, but basically the adjacent, so Eustis Elementary occupies about four acres there on the right-hand side of the aerial photo. The other side, we own most of that north side of the, I guess it would be the western parcel on the other side of Salem Street. There's two residential parcels that we did not pick up the first time we did this around 2000. Oh, sorry, 2010. I'm like, wow, I haven't been here that long. But the other parcel on the south side is, is actually owned by the St. Thomas Episcopal Church. We have had conversations with them about some kind of long-term lease or something like that. We haven't really come to any terms. They haven't had a lot of interest in it. So, you know, once we get there, we'll work with what we can get. The city has said that they would possibly vacate the road for us in order to be able to do it. And if so, depending on how it goes, we would either come across the right-of-way for Howard Lane below the property that we own. It's, you know, that's still kind of going to depend on what we are able to accomplish as far as acquisition in the end. But basically, our goal right now is to, to get the remainder of that north side.
Square, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay.
To square it up.
Yeah. You mean the remainder of that North Square, or the Northwest Square?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's, that makes sense. Okay. So I was trying to figure out where the church was in all this, I see. So the churches, the 241?
Um.
Or the, church is actually across the street.
So the church is actually on the south side of Lemon Avenue.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So that's not the church?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
They have a thrift, I think it's a thrift shop.
Oh, yeah, it is. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's really good.
And we used to lease the parking from them, and then we actually went ahead and put in our own parking lot.
Okay.
There on the north side.
All right, I'm oriented now. Thank you.
So this, this is a sales tax school, right, in a few years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have it programmed for basically the end of our five-year plan, and so, you know, we just want to go ahead and get these as we can.
So is, is the goal that we would be building then on the west side of Salem Street, something over there?
Well, in order to expand and to be able to shift the school around, there's, there is a, there's a couple of draft master plans out there that basically show some building on the, the west side of Salem, or it may be playground space or parking space, you know. That's really gonna, the architects are much better at that than I am.
All right. So do you foresee Salem Street remaining open, or?
Well, like I said, the city has indicated in the past that they might be willing to vacate that, at least that north portion of it, depending on, you know, what's on, what we own on either side.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, how far it continues north from there? I don't know.
Um, there's one more block, and then it gets to Orange Avenue.
Oh, okay. Oh, it does.
Yeah, yeah. And then it's actually to the south. It doesn't go all the way through.
I was just trying to really understand what our, what our hurdles would look like. I mean, I, as, as the guy who has playgrounds across from the school in his district, I just know how fun they get used. So.
No, our, our goal would definitely be to, to make that a unified piece of property from what we own.
Yeah, that seems like the most.
Make it much more usable. Okay. So unless there's any other questions, then we'll move forward with that, and we'll try and bring that to you as soon as possible. And then the last one is really very new for you, and if they can switch slides. We were approached about this piece of property. It's 19 acres in a subdivision that is under development in Howie and the Hills, and it is already zoned institutional. They had intended to sell it to a private, private school or a charter school, but then that fell through, so they approached us to see if we would be interested. And if you go to the next slide, shows you a little bit more. This is actually the subdivision plan that they have approved through the city, and it's that yellow parcel. The road on the right-hand side is actually the road that leads to the bridge to, to Varys. And next slide tells you a little bit about it. It's owned institutional. They are asking 1.6 million for it, which is a little less than 100,000 an acre. I think it's like 82, 85,000.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Thank you. And I will tell you, this is pure land banking if we do this. We don't have anything programmed in five years. I'm not sure that, honestly, that we would have anything within the next 10 years on it. But I'm also looking at, if they flip to the next slide, this is our development tracking map. There's approximately 34,000 units in this general area, and it's projected to produce about 5,000, over 5,000 elementary school students. Now, we have space for some of those in other schools, but there's a lot of them that we don't have any space for. And so, you know, these are the kinds of considerations. This is, it's a good location. It's already zoned correctly for us. It's not a bad price. We will need an appraisal, or actually two appraisals, to support that. But, you know, we've been back and forth with the sellers on the contract, and it's just starting to take a lot of time, a lot of attorney time. And before I move forward, I want to make sure that, that there aren't some serious concerns and serious questions about it. I don't want to spend a lot of time and money on it if it's something that, you know, the board really is not prepared to land bank. So.
There's an awful lot of development moving in that direction, and I will tell you that we can't get hurt. So it's worth banking, in my opinion.
I like the location. The price, I don't know.
So the price is $84,000 an acre?
Yeah, that seems high to me.
Is it because it's 19 frontage?
I will tell you, looking at the land, there's, it's the fact that it's frontage already. It's a developable area. But I will tell you, looking at land prices, it's, it's not outrageous.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, we're getting 95,000 for that louts.
Right, which does not necessarily have the same kind of access.
Where is it on this, with little like hair, is it lit? This little like hair is at the top? Where is the piece? Where, where is the plot?
See the star? Is it the star?
Yep, yep.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's just a lot of development going around in that area, and.
Howie is such a central location. I mean, it really, like, it's a really nice location for us to have things, because, you know, north and south can come together there.
It would give us some options, like maybe consolidating all of our district offices in one spot.
Right.
I'd say we buy it. Seventy-five.
We're not making votes.
You gotta talk faster.
I just said, I didn't say, what are y'all saying?
I would say, I have, I'm interested in it. I would say it's not worth, it's not a waste of time.
Okay. So our next steps on that would be to get the appraisals and to negotiate the contract, complete that work, and it would definitely would come back to the board before, you know, we move forward, and you'd have a chance to actually vote on it. But, but I just wanted to make sure that we weren't wasting time on it.
So that would have to be an elementary school, right?
It would. At 19 acres, it'd be an elementary school.
But it could also, like, Lake Hills, like, the Howie Academy, the.
But I think we're trying to find a solution for these.
That's Academy. Like, all those things that we sort of keep sticking places, Howie's a great location for those sort of things.
Oh, sure, 100%. But I guess we also want to try and solve this problem of the 5,400 elementary students, right?
Right.
So, so you can, you know, you can't really tuck those 2,000 kids where.
Yeah. Well, and I, I'll tell you, one of my, my kind of projects as a department is to really start kind of trying to look at, you know, I have in my head a general build-out plan of, okay, you know, once the county builds out, what does that look like in terms of schools? You know, feeder pattern of three elementaries feeding into a middle feeding into a high school. I don't have anything to give you right now, but it is definitely one of those things that, looking at, I consider. It's like, okay, what schools would feed into, what would this feed into? Where would we put other schools to feed into a middle school, to feed into a high school? And so that's really something that I'd like to, to work on over this next year.
But this, this has not produced, this is, this is a, are they paying impact fees? Or is, are they giving us, they're not giving us land in lieu of impact fees?
No.
Are they taking money off the buy in lieu of impact fees?
No, we would get.
Because 5,400 students means they need to pay impact fees, right?
Well, it's, it's, that's 5,400 students among all those developments.
It's a different development.
And then, so they will all.
So it's not this developer that needs, that's going to create 5,400?
That'd be a whole, a much bigger chunk.
I know. It's like, where are these kids coming from?
But they will be, you know, they'll be paying impact fees. Impact fees are not part of the negotiation. We did have a discussion with them, but their, you know, their point was time is money, and so it would actually cost them more if they gave us impact fee credits. And so basically, they were essentially lowering the price in order for a cash sale.
Any other questions?
So how much do we have in the, the cash sale line of the five-year plan?
So right now, for this year, we actually had $7 million in the budget for, for land acquisition. You know, I was hoping I would get a high school site in one way.
That's right.
That's not going to happen. So, you know, we'll kind of, we'll roll that over and, and hope for that again next year. Okay. All right. That was all I had. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right. One number comments. Mr. Mathias, you want to start?
Just, just great to be back. Hope everyone had a blessed Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
Mrs. Cunningham?
I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving, and I can tell you that I, once again, had an opportunity to be very proud to be a part of Lake County. I was in on a family discussion yesterday with my children, and it seems in the county they live, they're actually having to change the times that schools start and stop, and they have this ridiculous schedule. And it's all because they can't find enough bus drivers. So in Lake, we're doing quite well. At least we're not resorting to those kind of measures. So I say kudos to those of you on staff that have been working on those things. You're obviously doing a great job, because we are not, we don't find ourselves in that position. And the last thing I'd like to share is, I believe it was two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend a program in Ocahumpo where they are dealing with rebuilding a school that was built a long time ago, and I would like to express their gratitude on behalf of the people that are originating that to the school board. They very much appreciated your letter, Mr. Mathias, and they're looking forward to perhaps having some joint ventures with the school board. So again, that was a moment of pride for us in Lake County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burns?
That's wonderful. I just hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, as well. But I'd like to throw some things out there for people to mark their calendars. I don't know how many people are watching this time of day, but, you know, if you are, and you happen to be a parent of a Cypress Ridge student or Claremont Elementary, you know, we have one of the open houses tonight at 6 o'clock at Cypress Ridge to, for folks to get some more information on, on some of the things that have been proposed for options of Cypress Ridge, and, you know, and really call in that relationship. I have been surprised that I haven't heard back from as many people as I thought that I would at this point, that only very few people tend to reach out, I guess, for whatever reason on this one. And some of the folks have said that they feel like the decision's already made, and I imagine a decision like that needs to come to the board. And so I want to be an advocate for parents on what they're looking for here. So once again, I'd encourage the reach out. I did notice that, I think, maybe through one of the versions of our website, our phone numbers have come down, so I don't know if it's possible to, yeah, so it'd be nice, it'd be nice, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind having my cellphone backup. I think that just gives folks another chance to be able to reach out. But anyway, I'm really looking forward to hearing from parents on this one, and as well as the faculty and staff to, to hear their, their thoughts. And, and then one other to mark the calendar for, it's been a long time since Commissioner Parks and I, Commissioner Parks and I have held our coffee and conversations, but we do have one scheduled for December the 15th. It's in the evening at the Citrus Tower, 5:30 to 7:30. Naturally, we'll see some press releases come out from the county on that one, but as, as I do, Sherry, I'll make sure I forward that to you, so that way you can help distribute that information as well. And, you know, so we're, we're just excited about getting back and having, you know, some close conversations with, with our constituents, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. I'll, I'll reiterate the Thanksgiving. Hope everybody had a restful one, and to maintain, hang in there, because we have three weeks left, and it's going to be good.
I'm right there.
I'm twitching. Science fairs do Wednesday. So anyway, hang in there. We appreciate you. Attorney, superintendent, superintendent, you're first.
I just had one acknowledgement from Mr. Ward and his staff. We received a letter that says that their hard work and to complete the financial report for this year has received the certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting. So congratulations to you and your team, and thank you for all you do, and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Mr. Johnson? Nothing? All right, meeting adjourned.